Call this meeting to order today is Tuesday, September 28th, 2021. This is the Prescott City Council Voting Meeting. Mayor Protem, do you have any announcements?
I want to welcome County Supervisor Harry Oberg and Councilman-Elect Brandon Montoya. Nice to see you both. And then I'm sure many of you saw that former mayor Harvey Skug of Prescott Valley passed away last week and we send our thoughts and prayers to the town of PV and the Skug family. Harvey's Celebration of Life will be Friday at 10:00 a.m. at Findlay Toyota Center and is open to the public if anyone would like to attend. So I'm thinking about the Skugs during this difficult time and I think that's about it, Mayor.
Thank you so much. Today, we have an invocation from Pastor Dennis Baker with Mount Vernon Church of Christ and the pledge led by Councilmember Roosing.
Good afternoon. Would you pray with me? Our good Father, as we begin this meeting, we recognize your active role in the affairs of the human family. We recognize that you care as much about these proceedings as we do, for the decisions and actions of this council affect all of us. We recognize you are a God of justice and mercy and may the statutes and conclusions that are voted on today benefit the citizens of Prescott in a way that is equitable for all. We pray that we would always act with character and conviction, help us to listen with understanding and goodwill, help us speak with charity and restraint, give us a spirit of service. Remind us that we are stewards of authority entrusted by the people to do this important work. Father, I pray that you will guide these leaders to be the people, to be the type of leaders that people need. Help them see the humanity and dignity for those who disagree and to treat all people, no matter weak or poor, with reverence. Good Father, in our hearts, we plan our course, but we realize that you establish our steps. We pray that we would always seek you for advice, that our decisions would not be based upon what we know, but also upon wisdom. Please guide us and receive our thanks on behalf of those who are gathered here today. We thank you for the resources that enable us to do what needs to be done. We are thankful for the family members who support the important work of those on the council. Thank you for the measure of health they have and they need to fulfill the calling as leaders in this community. We pray the transition that will take place soon will be done with grace and wisdom. We also bring before you the names of the individuals who currently lead our city that are assembled here today. We pray for Greg Mangarelli, for Alexa Shoal, for Steve Blair, for Phil Good, for Kathy Roosing, for Steve Sishka, and Clark Tenney. Father, renew them with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of the people who live in Prescott, because you hear and you care. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor. Please call roll.
Mayor Mangarelli.
Present.
Mayor Protem Shoal.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Good.
Here.
Councilmember Roosing.
Here.
Councilman Sishka.
Here.
And Councilman Tenney.
Here.
All are present.
Thank you. Let's do proclamations, please.
Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October 2021.
The folks who are going to accept this proclamation, please step forward. How are you guys?
Good.
Hi. I have to start with a story, because I was talking to the M.O.S. over here and I said my nephew used to work for the city of Prescott at the police office. And when he was finished doing his training, he graduated with a young man from Flagstaff. And the young man went out on a, after about six months, he went out on a domestic violence call.
Thank you. He went out on a domestic violence call and was shot and killed. So this is really important for not only these folks, but also for our police. So I'm proclaiming Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October 2021. Whereas domestic violence is a pattern of control in an intimate relationship where one person uses coercion and violence to gain power and control over his or her partner. And whereas domestic violence includes not only physical abuse, but also mental, emotional, and financial abuse, isolation, and sexual violence. And whereas intimate partner violence affects people of all races, ages, and socioeconomic status. And whereas one in four women and one in 10 men in the U.S. have experienced sexual violence, physical violence, and/or stalking by an intimate partner. And whereas the lifetime cost of intimate partner violence per female and male victim is about $104,000 and $23,000 respectively. And whereas violence in the home can lead to adverse health and mental health outcomes, including a higher risk of chronic disease, depression, post-traumatic stress disorder, and risky sexual and substance abuse behaviors. And whereas stress and social isolation can increase the risk of domestic violence. And whereas by working together in this community, we can break the cycle of violence. Now therefore Greg Mangarelli, Mayor of the city of Prescott, does hereby proclaim the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And would you like to say a few words?
Please. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, for recognizing and approving this proclamation again. As stated in the proclamation, domestic violence can lead to adverse health and mental health outcomes, including higher risk of chronic disease, depression, post-traumatic stress disorder, and risky sexual and substance abuse behaviors. By educating our citizens, we can reassure those who are surviving through and recovering from domestic violence incidences. There are resources available 24 hours a day, seven days a week, here in our community. When city leadership recognizes and supports this, you are taking action to support our citizens and we are creating a coordinated community effort, which creates a safer and healthier environment for all of us. Thank you again for your support.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Let's move on to presentations, please.
Yavapai Library District presentation.
Oh, look, all my pictures disappeared. Hi, I'm Corey Christians. I'm Director of the Library District and County Librarian. I'd like to thank you for taking the time to hear a little bit about the Library District and what we do for the city of Prescott and for Yavapai County as a whole. So a little bit about the Library District. It was formed in 1987 after the legislature passed a law that allowed counties within Arizona to establish library districts. So the first, we established ours in 1987 and the Library District is run by a Board of Directors who are also the Yavapai County Board of Supervisors. So when they make decisions regarding the Library District, they put on their Library District hat and they make that decision. And here we have with us Director Oberg, Supervisor Oberg, who is your representative on that Board of Directors for the Library District. So in part of how it works is once a Library District is established, the libraries have to apply to be an affiliate of the Library District. And the process is pretty simple. It goes in the paper, you ask, you apply, and you're it. There's no saying no. So and of course, the city of Prescott's library is an affiliate of the Library District. It's also funded through property taxes, which currently is $15.21 per $100,000 of assessed valuation. So our core values for the Library District are service, professionalism, responsibility, and leadership. Our mission is to provide library materials and services to meet the informational, cultural, and recreational needs of all residents of Yavapai County through our branch libraries, our affiliates, and the Yavapai Library Network. So what do we do? A lot of people don't even know we exist, so they don't have a great idea of what it is a Library District actually accomplishes for them. Well, the first thing is we run the Yavapai Library Network, which is a consortium of libraries working together throughout the entire county. Currently, there are 57 libraries that participate in the Library Network, which makes it the largest consortium in Arizona by far. There's nothing that's even close. 26 governing authorities participate in that network and it consists of academic, K-12, public, archival, and law libraries. We also provide RFID support services, technical support services, cataloging services. We sort materials that come in, because all the libraries that are part of the network share their materials, and we do that to the tune of about 300,000 items per year. So overall, the Library Network provides about $6 back for every dollar that's spent on making it work. So we can deliver books to any library and we do that 300,000 times a year. So what do we do? We also provide direct library services to Yavapai County citizens. We run 15 branch libraries. We operate them in rural and unincorporated areas, including the municipalities of Dewey-Humboldt and Clarkdale. We also provide books, ultra-high-definition movies, video games, DVDs, audiobooks, e-materials, and more that people can circulate and request to come to their library. We also do notaries, programming, and public computers at our branch libraries. We also support municipal libraries. So this is, for instance, what the city of Prescott Public Library would benefit from. We provide Mango Languages, a universal class online learning, provide access to a variety of state databases that we pay for, and we pay the overdrive subscription fee. So we pay for the fee and then each library puts in their own money to actually buy the materials that are accessible to the public. We also provide a courier service and we provide representation at a state level. And we give over $1.8 million in direct funding to municipal libraries and seven affiliate library. So how do we come up with this formula? How do we figure out how much money your library is supposed to get? It does get a bit complicated. We use a formula to determine that. It's, for the most part, a very fair formula with performance factors that go into other things such as assessed valuation. Since we do have a property tax levy, it's a good measure that if we're getting more of your taxpayer money, you should get more of that money back. So there's a standard amount of 9%. Population goes to 5% of the formula. Assessed valuation is 50%. 20% is circulation. Active patrons are 10% and items are 6%. So out of the total, $1.675 million that we give to the municipal public libraries, that's how we decide who gets what percentage of that amount. So specifically what this means for Prescott Public is that that standard amount, you get $16,755 for that, because it's 9% of the total $1.675 million. 5% is 25,000. That makes up your amount. A whopping $337,000 for the assessed valuation portion. $125,000 for circulation. $51,000 for active patrons and items at $27,000. All the numbers are rounded, so they're not going to add up to be completely equal, but it does all measure out when the cents are included. So how's it looked over the last several years? So starting in FY 1617, it was at 596,000. Right now, it's at 583,000. And you're probably wondering why there's been a reduction. The obvious answer to that is COVID. So it's impacted how people use the library. It's impacted the number of people going into the library. And since part of our formula is performance-based, the fewer people going into the library will impact the amount of money that each municipal library gets. So as far as looking at your overall library budget, about $552,000 of it goes to pay for your library, almost one quarter. We have a total contribution of $583,000. What we do is for the YLN, the Yavapai Library Network membership, we take that $31,000 right off the top and we use it to pay for the network membership, which that money goes into a separate fund, which the Yavapai Library Network Steering Committee decides how to spend that money. So rather than giving you the whole $583,000 and then asking you to send us $31,000 back for that fee, we just hold it back and transfer it into that other account. So the total check you'll actually receive is $552,000, which goes to offset about a quarter of your library's costs. And with that, there's my contact information and I have a check for $583,000. Give it to somebody who would like to take it. Good to see you, Roger. Good to see you. So here you go, $583,000. Good luck putting that in the ATM. So if you have any questions for me, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Thank you, Corey. This is always an important part of our operational funds and not every county in the state does a similar sharing process. So it's great. Thank you.
Questions, comments from the council, anyone?
Well, I just would like to say thank you. The libraries are an important part of our community and it's a wonderful amenity that we can offer to the public.
My pleasure, Councilmember Roosing. Thank you.
Yep. Well, thank you so much for being here. Thanks for the presentation and the check.
Appreciate everybody's time. Thank you.
All right. Let's move on to consent agenda. Is there any item that any member would like to pull from consent today?
Yes, Mayor.
Yeah.
I'd like to pull item number 8J, information technology, Fortinet.
Okay. Anyone else? Entertaining motion?
Mayor, I move to approve consent agenda items 8A through 8O excluding 8J.
Second. A motion and second. Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right. Let's go to item J, please. Did you have a question?
Thank you. The reason why I pulled this is this involves $305,000 plus for a network security hardware. And I was doing some research and Fortinet has very strong ties to the Chinese Communist government. In 2019, there was a whistleblower lawsuit where they sold Chinese-made equipment intentionally mislabeled as "made in USA" to the U.S. military. So I was wondering if maybe there was some other options made in the USA available.
Councilmember Roosing, Mayor Mangarelli in council. I've, what you're asking is an important question, I think, and it's a good question. And it speaks to a lot of different angles. One angle, I think, is that the notion of what is an American company, a Chinese company, this company, or that company, when they're multinationals, is a hard thing to pin down. In the case of Fortinet, it's a company founded by U.S. citizens headquartered in the United States, has clearances with the Department of Defense, the NSA, counterparts in other similar countries to that. I've not been able to find any information that suggests that Fortinet is somehow in league with the Chinese government. And it's a different case than, say, I'll give an example, there's a network security company. It's based in Russia. Company's name is a, the founder's name, he's a Russian. That company we actually divested from because there were concerns, unanswered questions about that company, ownership of that company, it's not a public company, and relationships and influence with the Russian government. So it's a topic that we're always interested in. It's something we're always looking for, but I've not been able to find any information that suggested Fortinet or its founders are in league with the Chinese government. And based on the fact that our federal government, the NSA, DOD, Department of Defense, uses Fortinet, who is a, they have revenues in excess of $2 billion a year. So it's not a tiny company doing one thing. It's a very broad company. I am perfectly comfortable on a professional level, on a agent of the public of Prescott, essentially, that we're not entering into a business relationship with a company that we've already done business with that is somehow going to lead us down a path where we open a Trojan horse into our network or our security. Does that answer your question? Is that what you're looking for?
Thank you.
Councilman Good?
I have very similar concerns when this company clearly, over a period of seven years, had one of their management employees directing contractors to change labels from their sources so that phrases such as "designed in the United States" and "Canada" or "assembled in the United States" were on these components. And it took an internal whistleblower to file a lawsuit in order to get this long-term problems within their company to be exposed. At that time, they then entered into an agreement with the U.S. government to pay $545,000 in fines because of this mislabeling. And it wasn't their senior management that should have and certainly could have known what was happening and didn't do it. So I have serious concerns about their ongoing ability to make sure that they're providing equipment to the city of Prescott that we can rely on. And I would suggest that we don't enter into a three-year enterprise agreement. Perhaps if they truly can clarify and clean up their act, then maybe we should give them a one-year contract and monitor their performance, as other companies throughout the United States have tried to bring back their ability to provide competitive products in the cybersecurity, internet security. Even Intel is building a big chip factory here in Arizona so that we can have more domestic control of these important and critical security issues. So if we have to vote for this three-year contract, I'm going to vote no for it. But I would suggest that I understand that we would get a substantial discount for a three-year enterprise agreement and make your job of coordinating some of these other products a little bit easier. I would much rather see a short-term agreement and see if we can be assured that this company is acting in the best interest of not only the United States, but the city of Prescott.
Other questions, comments from the council? All right.
Can I make a motion?
Yes, you can.
I'd like to make a motion that we amend this agreement and only allow a one-year contract with Fortinet for the necessary software and management for the IT department.
I second it.
A question.
Yeah, go ahead.
City Attorney, within the agreement of a three-year agreement, is there an escape clause if we were to vote for a three-year agreement if something went wrong?
Nate, do you know what the termination provisions are?
It's essentially, it's financially structured that it's a three-year or it's nothing. It doesn't make sense financially for us to eat the entire thing as a year. You lose the benefit of the cost savings, essentially.
Yep.
I have a question. After.
Well, let me use my little thing here. Councilman Tenney?
That was essentially my question. What are the ramifications of the motion that Councilman Good has made financially for the city of Prescott? And I think you've clarified.
Financially, you would lose out on that, but operationally, which at some level, while finances are certainly important, operationally, if you don't have your security, you're no good. It doesn't change anything for what we're actually doing today. It doesn't open us up to security issues or problems.
Councilman Sishka?
Thanks, Mayor.
Nate, who is E+ Technology?
They are a reseller, essentially. An agent, we can't directly buy from Fortinet. We have to buy through an agent. In this case, E+ is the agent we use.
So let me ask you this.
Yeah.
Could they screw things up in one year just as well as they could screw things up in three?
If a person is not comfortable with what Fortinet does, then I don't know that it would matter if it's one year, three years, or two years, to be honest. It's a Councilman Good's point, if Fortinet's doing something squarely, then squarely is squarely, whether it's today, tomorrow, six months, a year from now, it's squarely.
So what you're saying is if we don't feel like this organization is on the up, then we either need to say yea or nay.
Essentially, and the caveat there is that as an IT department, that's something we're always looking at, is who do we do business with? What are they doing? What are they not doing? Right? Because the technology is very complex, just like, you know, your car is complex. It's made by a lot of manufacturers. If the manufacturer's no good, there's not a lot of value in having that car, that piece of technology.
You know, my feeling is at some point, you got to trust staff. So, you know, I mean, if it's your recommendation, and did you, were there competing technology companies in this situation?
We've had a long-term relationship with Fortinet, the company that was the same products before Fortinet, same founders, in fact, same people, U.S. citizens. It's a different situation than, say, Huawei, which is a Chinese company who is very tightly aligned with the Chinese government, to the point that the federal government has said, "Do not buy if you're in government from Huawei," period. End of story.
But they haven't said that about Fortinet.
DOD and NSA use Fortinet a ton. And I would suspect if they had a lot of qualms about it, either they're suckers, they know something we're not, but they're not letting on, or it's a really great con that all these people have pulled off so that we can't see through the veil of what they're doing to know that there's something funky going on. It doesn't feel that way, but it doesn't mean it's not there. It just doesn't feel that way. And if it is, they're really good at hiding it.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Thanks, Mayor. I guess I kind of have the same feeling as Councilman Sishka. I mean, it seems like the U.S. government has done extensive business with this company and still is. I trust your judgment and your recommendation to us. I don't feel like you would bring this forward to council if you had concerns or weren't ready to present it. And then I guess my second question might be for Matt. Are we able to make a motion for a one-year contract? Or does that need to go back and?
You could certainly make the motion, but Fortinet may not agree to doing a one. It's basically going to kill the deal, is my understanding. They're not going to do a one-year contract with us.
Okay.
Councilmember Roosing?
Are there any companies out there that you would recommend that are 100% American? Or does that even exist anymore?
In today's world, it doesn't really exist. And the reason for that is that, like, let's say we're starting a computer company, a cybersecurity company, and we got really smart people. We probably don't own a chip manufacturing plant. Those are generally in Taiwan. They might be in Israel. They might be in Texas, still American. But there's only so many places to get that. Okay? We have chips under control. Now we need programmers. Same deal. We might have American programmers, but more than likely, we're going to have a follow-the-sun model, which means we have programmers Asia, North America, Europe, and we have work going 24/7. So to your point, a company that's headquartered in the United States, or Israel, or Russia, or China, if it's a public company, it's hard to say that it's an American company other than the fact of what are the nationalities of the ownership? Who do they do business with? In the case of that Russian company I mentioned, the problem there is it's a Russian national, very well-regarded company headquartered in Russia, not a public company. And that raises some major red flags that I would argue is different than, say, Huawei and totally different than Fortinet. If Fortinet was a rinky-dink outfit, I could see the, that'd be one thing. A company that's headquartered in the U.S. is a good first step. Ownership on their board of directors are all U.S. citizens, which is a good next step. And if the fact that, say, the U.S. federal government had said, "Look, if you're going to buy stuff from this company, you're a bunch of ninco..." or a bunch of nincompoops, don't do it." And I walked here, up here, and said, "We should do that," I would expect you'd asked Michael for my resignation because that's insanity, right? Why would we do that? It doesn't mean we don't monitor the situation. It doesn't mean, in Councilman Good's point, that what was happening with the whistleblower and all that stuff isn't good. But I also know that in companies that are very large with thousands of employees, is if I do something dumb, would you throw out all the city's leadership? Kind of a thing like, well, maybe. Depends on if they knew about it. Depends on if I was a rogue actor doing it on my own. Like, that's complicated. So American company, Fortinet is that. Our federal government, the federal governments in UK, the Five Eyes, you know, Australia, New Zealand, Canada, they all do business with this company. I would argue it's not a case of us going on a dangerous path by our own. It's more us following a well-worn path by a lot of people but not walking down that path totally blind and just following to follow, if that makes sense.
Is it publicly traded?
Yes.
On the New York Stock Exchange or the NASDAQ?
NASDAQ, I believe.
So SEC is reviewing and regulating it anyway?
Yes.
Councilman Good?
So Nate, if we weren't to use Fortinet, what other options do we have?
You could go to Cisco. You're looking at a mid-six-figure layout to retool all of our systems to go to Cisco. Cisco, for example, is a US company, so like-for-like. Cisco's comparative-sized like-for-like. Cisco, though, was caught allowing the NSA to install hardware backdoors in their products. And that's a case of our government using this provider to spy on foreign governments, citizens. It's a case where I think if a company is big enough, they're not all squeaky-clean angels, altar boys, if you will. It's a tough thing. It doesn't mean we want to sign up with a bunch of criminals and fascists necessarily. But there aren't a lot of companies that have the breadth of offerings that Fortinet has, the cachet of experience and knowledge that they have. Those companies that do, like Cisco, very good companies, but it's a significant retooling of our infrastructure down to the DNA level of our network would have to be redone, essentially, to accommodate a switch of vendor. Very... Not something you do for fun, not something you just do on a lark, essentially. It could be done, but it's a very difficult thing to just do, if that makes sense.
Well, that's kind of the consequence of when we get overly dependent on a particular supplier. So I'm willing to withdraw my motion for a one-year contract since it doesn't seem to be a possibility. And we'll just leave it to vote for this.
Is the second willing to withdraw as well?
Yes.
So the motion's withdrawn. So the table's open for another motion.
So what are we voting on?
The original contract.
Somebody has to make a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve Consent Agenda Item 8J.
Second. So we have a motion and second to approve Item J on the consent agenda. Please vote.
Passes 6-1.
Okay. Let's go to Consent Ordinance, please.
Adoption of Ordinance Number 2021-1774 in ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the abandonment of alleyway to Gloria Frias Magdalena and Gloria Frias and Montezuma Partners LLC and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said abandonment. An adoption of ordinance number 2021-1775 in ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, authorizing the acceptance of Yavapai County-owned portions of East Old Highway 89A and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said acceptance of real property.
Okay, thank you. Entertain a motion?
Mayor, I move to adopt Consent Ordinance Items 9A and 9B.
Second. The motion and second, is there any discussion? All right, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right, thank you. Let's go on to Item 10A, please.
Presentation and update regarding the Granite Creek and Prescott North area plans from Leslie Dornfeld. Feld, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. We're just deciding if Tyler would introduce me, but he's chosen not to. So I will introduce myself. My name is Leslie Dornfeld. My firm is Planet. And we appreciate the opportunity for working with you and your community on the Granite Creek Quarter and the Prescott North Plans. And we're just going to give you a little bit more of a detailed presentation on Granite Creek and a shorter presentation just to share with you some of the research we've done on Prescott North. With me today are two of the members of my consulting team in person, Rick Merritt, who's our economist from L.A. DePolak and Company, and Dean Chambers, who's from Lakahie. And they're handling our mobility and parking areas. And then I'm hoping on the line is Kurt Nagel from CRTKL, and he's our designer. So just before I start, Kurt, are you here? Is he dialed in?
Give me just one minute. So bear with me for just a second.
No worries. Glad I asked. Kurt's located in California, and so just because of COVID reasons, he's not able to be with us. No problem. Just tell me when.
Okay, he should be able to unmute himself.
Yeah, hi, I'm here.
Hi, Kurt.
Sorry about the delay on that.
No worries. And you can see the presentation too, yeah?
It's not great, but I think I'll manage.
Okay, here we go. So this is the Granite Creek Quarter Plan. So I'm going to chat with you about the Granite Creek Quarter Plan. Okay, is there a trick to getting this to... Go ahead. Thank you. Here we go. Maybe not. There we go. We're going to chat with you a little bit about the purpose of the project, what we've done to date, talk with you a little bit about the concept plan that we've developed, and we'll be bringing this information to the community tonight at a community meeting and our next steps. So just to remind some of you, it's been a while since you gave us the opportunity to talk with you and approve this plan. The purpose of the Granite Creek Quarter Project is to really leverage your investment in Granite Creek to support the built environment around it. So you're putting a lot of money into improving the creek and the creek trail and, you know, getting rid of invasive vegetation, fixing the bridges. That should... Investment should also have some benefit, some spillover into the downtown. The project oversight is the city. Tyler's our project manager. We've been chatting regularly with the planning department. We also talked with the city's engineer, engineering department, Craig, and they've been very helpful as we've moved forward. But there's also a citizen working group that's been giving us guidance as we move forward. And you'll see the working group includes businesspeople, folks that are involved in the downtown from a not-for-profit or advisory or support perspective. And then additionally, city staff. So what we've done to date, and this is just going to be a quick brief through what we've already done. We've walked the site with the steering committee and community members, and they got a chance to talk to us about what their concerns were and what they felt were opportunities. And we did that back in January. We had some focus discussion groups in May. And those were quarter businesses and civic organizations, landowners and realtors, planning entities, and recreation stakeholders. And so some of the bigger topics and the bigger planning challenges really came out in those discussion groups. Some of them had to relate to housing, and Rick will talk a little bit about that later. Some discussion about the impact of the floodplain on development costs, and you'll see how some of that fleshed out later as well. And just about wanting the area to be a little bit distinct and different from the core, the historic core of the downtown. We've also had an online community meeting. There were 38 registered participants. Most of those folks showed up. We've also had three working group meetings. The site walk constituted our first meeting, and then we've had two online meetings. We also did a community survey. We had 138 people respond. And we really asked them about what they thought was important to include in the area, what were some of the opportunities for us in terms of planning for the area. And you can see that people really do want Granite Creek to be visible from the Granite Creek Quarter area. They think that eating and drinking and dining opportunities along that creek would be great. They want to see some building design that focuses on Granite Creek and differentiates this area from the rest of the downtown. And about 7% or 10% people that responded to the survey owned or operated a business in the Quarter. The bulk of them lived in the city of Prescott, and some of them worked in the Quarter. We also did some economic land use, circulation, and mobility assessments. And I won't go into those in detail, but basically, this isn't news to you. Prescott really is the leader in sales tax for the county. They really are an attractor, and it's important to keep that role there for the city. We also looked at best practices projects, other areas that encouraged redevelopment along creeks throughout the US. And, you know, a creek is different than a beach. It's a totally different kind of vibe and a different kind of a concept. Real estate is dealt with differently. So we were very careful to look at creeks, comparable downtowns with important historic resources and that were smaller communities. And so these were the five areas that we identified for best practices. And what we learned from them are what really made them successful were building standards and development standards, a lot of public-private partnerships with groups and with individuals, developers as well. The city had control of key sites, so they were able to force the kind of development they wanted to see as catalytic projects that really proved... They were proof of what could be done downtown, proof of success. There was a lot of focus on promoting pedestrian activity, creating pedestrian activity zones and pedestrian areas, especially in some of the downtowns that were much longer along the creek. They amenitized public spaces. There was a tremendous amount of city investment in those spaces. A lot of financial incentives were used, TIF and GIPlet. And we'll talk about those in a minute. Most of the areas had a local management board or a local association. A lot of them had investment opportunities and funding. And they created special districts to create special types of development and zoning that really made the area unique from the rest of the community. So those were some of the key things that we learned from our best practices. And all of this information in more detail is available on the project website. So based on all that input, we really realized there were five strategy areas to help us develop a draft Quarter Plan. The five strategy areas focused on land use, design, which is what Kurt will speak to, mobility, that's what Dean will speak to, economics, Rick, and then wayfinding. And the wayfinding, we'll be dealing with it a little bit later in our next meeting. So our planning framework really is a series of more or less seven objectives. But one of the things that underlines all of this is we really realize we need to next-gen the Quarter. It's really important that the Quarter is ready for the new types of businesses, the new types of consumers, the new types of uses, and the new types of kind of demands that people are placing on their downtowns. You know, historic Prescott, right around the Courthouse Square, is a very unique environment. But this area needs to be a little bit different. And you'll see that come out in some of our design recommendations because something, when you see something different, you realize it is different. So the first thing that we did to kind of create this identity was we divided the Quarter into three districts, three precincts. One is called the Work Precinct, the Play Precinct. The second is the Play Precinct. That's mostly focused around the area directly west or towards the creek from the Courthouse Plaza, and then the Live District. And you... Those pretty much reflect the bulk of the uses that are there now. The Work District will include, is right next to the new city hall, but it includes, for example, the new hotel. It is adjacent to where the Prescott Community College owns land. So it's more of that kind of a district. The Play District really focuses on entertainment. Most of those uses are there now. And then the Live District really puts residential first. And again, most of those types of uses are around that district now. And it's also got the middle school. The other kinds of strategies in our framework is one, and this is probably a key strategy, that we want to extend the Whiskey Row Alley north and south to create a granite Quarter Loop. And we think it's really important that if you walk down the Quarter, you're below the downtown. You need to know that there's the downtown next to you. So by creating this loop with multiple mid-block access points, people will... The Granite Creek becomes more permeable, and the downtown becomes more permeable as well. And you'll see ways for making that happen in all kinds of strategy areas, mobility, land use, economics, design, and in wayfinding. Providing that mid-block access, most of those strategies are located in our design, wayfinding, and mobility areas. Providing opportunities to physically and visually interact with the creek. You can see the areas. I'm not going to just keep repeating the same words. But those icons indicate what areas... You'll see most of the strategies to accomplish, or most of the policies to accomplish that strategy are located. And we also to encourage public and private investment into the alleys to attract people into the Quarter. A lot of that comes through some of the economic strategies Rick will be talking about. And you can also see some of these strategies were very directly taken from what our best practices findings were. So none of this is reinventing the wheel. We also want to encourage land uses that support the focus of each precinct. A lot of that's in the land use and the economic strategies. And then encouraging design and development on underused and vacant sites that incorporate opportunities to activate side yards. And those would be those more east-west connections and viewpoints for retail frontage. So part of our hope would be that if we create these east-west alleys, a store could open onto that alleyway as well. And you could walk by a storefrontage. Maybe there would be glasses. You're coming east-west, not only along those north-south streets. Would really create a much more permeable and inviting and very unique area, I think, in all of Arizona. So we'll talk about each of the strategy areas now. The land use strategies, we've identified some primary uses. Most of this is already supported Most of this is already supported by your downtown business district in code. The primary land uses we're recommending are government, temporary lodging, employment, food and beverage. Secondary would be office, retail, residential, and recreation. We're recommending some prohibited uses. Most of these are already prohibited by code, but I want to point out one additional recommendation we're making is to begin to prohibit single-family residential in the quarter. Land is too valuable. We need people in that quarter too much to use land on low-intensity uses. And one of those low-intensity uses would be single-family. We didn't say parking in here because we realize how valuable parking is, but Dean will talk about a little bit about ways of increasing the amount of parking off of spaces or areas that are directly adjacent to the creek, which we think are prime opportunities. And as we move forward, it might be that we begin to, as we move forward, prohibit parking that's certainly adjacent to the creek. Again, that would be as uses change out. We're certainly not recommending elimination of existing uses now. The play precinct, primary land uses would be temporary lodging, food and beverage, retail, and parks. And our secondary uses begin to phase out that work district, but office, office services, and residential primarily on the second floors. We really want to keep this a ground-floor retail district, a ground-floor entertainment district. Again, the prohibited uses are mostly what's in code. You'll see drive-throughs prohibited. Gas stations are not a great use for that area. And again, we don't want to see new single-family residential in that area. In the live precinct, you can see we put residential as a primary use, food and beverage. The school is a very important use in that area, and parks and recreation. Part of that is the field and hoping to multi-use that field. Maybe there's an opportunity for a smaller supermarket in this area, personal services, you know, hairstyling salons, doctor's offices. But again, we don't want to see, even though it is a live precinct, single-family residential. We want to maximize the use of those sites and really begin to get people into that area to begin to support it. Some just general land use strategies for the entire downtown, the entire quarter area, not the downtown, but the quarter area, would be to change the code to prohibit certain types of uses like medical clinics and churches. The reason is, is these uses have large periods of time when they're vacant, and we really want to keep it a 24, as close to 24/7 type of environment as possible. Auto shops are very low-intensity uses, car detailing and feed stores. We really don't want to allow those uses in there at all. Those are, right now, I think permitted by code. I'm just checking with planning to find that out. And we think that there are some that should be allowed by a use permit, things like outdoor entertainment, standalone parking lots, sometimes they're needed, pet grooming, because in the live district, everybody's going to have a dog. Same for small animal clinics, you know, not horses, but everybody has a dog or a cat or a bird. Some of the other land use strategies we're recommending is using easements to help create these east-west access points, eliminating permit and rezoning fees to reduce the cost of development in this quarter. Because this quarter is mostly in the floodplain, buildings need to be elevated, and the cost of new building and frankly, large reconstruction is prohibited once you hit those floodplain guidelines. Anything that the city can do to help reduce those costs, we think will encourage redevelopment and renovation. Maybe maybe allowing higher building heights up to 60 feet. That'll get you a five-story building. Again, it'll really begin to change the dynamics of what's in that quarter, and frankly, it'll help make some of that more buildable if you can get some more income from those lots. Working to encourage interim uses on vacant lots to keep this area active. And then the other thing that we're suggesting is maybe think about, especially on the northwest side, applying some of these strategies to land uses that are outside the quarter. Especially on McCormick Street, you've got the Phoenix Community, not the Phoenix, the Prescott College site, and you've got some city-owned land. And we think all of those areas could maybe benefit from some of the ideas that we're putting forward in the design guidelines for the Granite Creek Corridor. We think there should be ground-floor retail throughout the lives precinct, even though we're encouraging higher-density uses there. So the idea would be certainly not on Montezuma Street to have areas with no glazing and no ground-floor activity. And then working with landowners, both in the work precinct and in the play precinct, to maybe put some residential uses on those second floors. So the next area that we're going to talk about is the design guidelines, and I'm going to turn it over to Kurt, and you can just say next, Kurt, and I'll move the slides for you.
Okay. Thank you, Leslie. So one of the pieces of the plan will be a set of design guidelines supported by site studies of three catalytic sites. And a key part of the guidelines is what we're calling connections principles. So there'll be guidelines that deal with each of the precincts, but there's also a series of guidelines that run through the precincts. And those deal with creek-adjacent design, the alleyways, and really how to enrich and integrate the alleyways and the pedestrian network, the passeos that Leslie had mentioned, which tend to be east-west to connect with the creek. And then a few were, then some guidelines about floodplain areas. For instance, in general, within the floodplain, we want to discourage ground-floor residential use, at least to the extent feasible. And so for each of those connections principles, then there's a series of more detailed guidelines that deal with more specific topics, such as outdoor dining along, for instance, alleys or adjacent to creek, how these open spaces get designed, for instance, what sort of outdoor furniture is appropriate, or public art and such. Next. And then, as I mentioned, then there's a series of principles for each of the three precincts. Though in reality, the precinct, the principles for the three precincts are fairly similar. There'll be some minor variations on each one. It's more the specific guidelines then that will vary from precinct to precinct. But we want to make sure the site planning's efficient, that the buildings, you know, are in harmony with the adjacency, eye-catching, active frontages, and just high-quality architectural design. So, next. And so here we've, similar to one of the prior slides, we've laid out the various principles and some of the key topics that are dealt under each of those principles in more detail than the guidelines. So things like doorientation of the building and its placement, achieving human-scale, what we call human-scale design, design of entrances, design of building frontages, signage, lighting, parking, et cetera. Next. So the works precinct, with this slide, we want to highlight, we show the various principles. What we really want to highlight here, the different potential building or recommended building typologies, which relate to the land use presentation that Leslie gave. But key building typologies would be employment in office, including some multi-story office, but could be some standalone, food and beverage services, mixed use, which is a common theme throughout the precincts. Also potential for live-work and hotel lodging, which we know we already have in the work precinct. Next. So a little bit of discussion and caveat about this. So mentioned, we're doing some site studies, one for each of the precincts. And there'll be multiple views for each of the site studies. This is very much in progress, so, but we did want to just kind of give you a flavor of in-progress. So this is a live-work product behind a series of single-family residences that face onto the creek. So it'd have tuck-under parking with office on the ground floor facing onto the creek with residential above. Kind of obviously a modern flair to this, kind of the idea of perhaps getting a little next-genning, as Leslie calls it, the work precinct. So a little bit of a more of a modern flair. One of the changes we're working on here, very obvious that we need to do, is the creek side on the left looks far too manicured, so we'll have to give that a much more natural feel. And there's just, you know, too much green grass here. So again, caveat, this is very much in progress. So, next. So the play precinct, in terms of the building typologies, again relating to the land uses Leslie had mentioned, so retail use, food and beverage, all appropriate, mixed use with the residential above, retail on the ground floor, townhomes are a possibility, cultural and historic would be a great use and type for the play precinct. And then, next. This is another in-progress. So again, the creek would be trying to show activity along the creek. The creek would be on the, is on the left-hand side, but again, too manicured, we'll have to give this a much more natural feel. But this is, this concept within the play district is retail and restaurant use with a setback off the creek from the buildings to allow for outdoor uses such as dining, public gathering, and such to really, and a walkway here as well, to really start activating the creek edge. Next, next please. Live precinct. So here, multifamily housing is recommended use, including multi-story types, but live-work could be a possibility, townhomes. And then some support retails would be appropriate for this district, potentially standalone or street frontage, retail, and then mixed use, which would, again, ground-floor retail with residential above. And then, next. So this image is a little more developed than the others. So this is showing underutilized site along Montezuma, adjacent to the school playfield, showing a mixed-use building type, so ground-floor retail on Montezuma, and then residential use above. And here, I think, you know, some of the landscape is perhaps getting a little more closer to getting away from the green turf. And then really starting to use that retail to activate the street and get some streetscape in, that would draw the activity down from along Montezuma. Okay, so Leslie, I'll pass that on to whoever's next. Guess that's Rick.
So we looked at some of the economic strategies that you could put together to activate the Granite Creek Corridor, and Arizona really doesn't have a whole lot of redevelopment-type tools that can be used. The one that is used quite often is called the government property lease excise tax, or called the JIPLET, in which the property that's developed is turned over to the ownership of the community and thereby can avoid paying property taxes. Instead, they pay an excise tax. And it's been used in the city of Tempe, for instance, 60 times, and Phoenix, about 30 times, and it's about the only tool that we really have. In order to really effectively use the JIPLET, you should establish a redevelopment area for your downtown, and if you lay that over your CBD, your central business district, you can abate property taxes for eight years completely on this particular property. So it really can be an effective tool to incentivize developers to come into the town and provide them the ability to reduce their expenses, particularly in the early parts of a project. We think you can target infrastructure investments that enhance the retail environment, including art, decorative pavement, signage, things of that nature. You could consider the formation of a Granite Creek Corridor Business Improvement District. This requires the owners within the district to vote, to basically assess themselves, to make infrastructure improvements, to have funding for events and things like that in the corridor. We think it's really important to promote new residential development in the corridor. What we found in our analysis, I think you all know that probably the average age of the typical Prescott resident is 55 years of age, about 20 years more than the average age for somebody just living in the state of Arizona. We found the same thing, the age-wise downtown, but they're lower income in the downtown area, much lower income, the average wage found throughout Prescott. And there are a lot of single-person households. So we think really, once again, we're talking about a new generation of residents to move in here. We really think it's important to bring that new resident into downtown. It'll help promote your retail development, your restaurant business, things of that nature. We looked at some development incentives that you could provide, flexible standards, waiving permit fees, things of that nature, expediting development plans, which can really once again try to help to get the investment into the downtown area. You have an opportunity zone for much of the downtown area north of Gurley Street that needs to be promoted. I know your economic development people have a brochure on it, and they are promoting it, but it's one more incentive that can help investment in the downtown area. Once again, encourage high-density residential development along vacant and underused parcels of Granite Creek, and continue to promote the development of hotels, hospitality venues, event venues in the downtown. Your new hotels are a great asset to the downtown, particularly connecting over the Tressel Bridge into the warehouse hardware store, the old store that's there. And that's the type of thing that once again will promote overnight accommodations in the downtown, overnight visitations, things of that nature. Now pass it on to Dean.
Large button?
One on the right.
One on the right. Okay, thank you. All right. So mobility. Overall, it's all about making a connected network for pedestrians, bicyclists, motor vehicles. So starting off with alleyways, there's some great assets in the area. And Whiskey Row Alley, that idea of extending that, as Leslie said earlier, and creating a loop that connects the Granite Creek Corridor and the Whiskey Row Alley Corridor. That sets up the pedestrian network. Overall, the pedestrian network, getting a finer grain to the network, so accessways, those east-west passeos, and then defined and signalized crossings along the creek corridor so people can safely pass at street level. And those are gateway elements also to get people off the street and into the corridor. We also suggest making sure all the crossings are signalized and that there's four-way or three-way, depending on the intersection, crossings. Bicycles, you know, there's not a lot of need for separate bike lanes, except where there's not on-street parking. We want to promote quite a bit of on-street parking, as you'll see later in the parking section, and we look at shared streets as the tool to move bicycles with motor vehicles in a slow, slowed-speed manner, calm streets. Oops, come back. Public transportation. Currently, there's not routes into the downtown, but when those do occur, look at the hubs as not just bus stops, but micro-mobility, so scooters, bike share, those sorts of things. And then also ride-share, which means Uber and Lyft. That's here, and we're finding that many communities with busy entertainment districts benefit from having defined ride-share locations. So it's not stopping traffic in the district. It creates these pickup-drop-off curb zones. So you can geofence and geolocate. I'm at so-and-so place on Whiskey Row. I've had too many drinks. I want to go to my hotel. I can call Lyft. They'll pick me up in a location, and it keeps things moving in a safe and efficient And last, or next to last here, motor vehicles. We see the entire district as a 25-mile or less speed limit, and most of it is, except for kind of the ends of Montezuma right now. And Willis is, I believe, at 25, but certainly no one drives it at 25. And so that, setting up the tools with on-street parking, shorter, bulbed-out intersections, and then a signalized intersection at Aubrey and Montezuma to set up that on-street parking, that more pedestrian-level zone that complements the land uses, those ground-floor retail, live-work along those streets. So it's really pulling that out instead of it getting more to be a highway suburban feel. South of Carlton, it shifts it, that urban feel all the way down to Aubrey. It also helps with progression in the signalization and controlling the speeds and the flow of traffic through the area. That assists actually, having those signalized. We also were saying a roundabout to slow traffic, the turning movement at Willis. So as you know, at Willis and McCormick, it's kind of the speedway curve there, that people come that way, and the majority of traffic is forced east on Willis, so it's not split and doesn't use McCormick much, and take advantage of the overall... and take advantage of the overall vehicle network. But a roundabout would help distribute traffic and also slow traffic for setting up a complete street or, or a calm street on Willis. And that also assists with moving people north of Willis, getting people crossing. Currently, it's, it's quite a difficult thing to cross as a pedestrian or a vehicle. And I think I've touched on all of these already. Of control signals and signalized mid-block crossings for pedestrians. I already touched on that earlier. And then parking, increased parking capacity on-street where at all possible. And we're looking on McCormick, south of Goodwin, on Montezuma, south of Carlton, on Carlton, west of Montezuma, and some rework along Goodwin and Willis to get on-street parking and, and a calm street. So maybe squeeze a few more spaces in there, make that work a little bit better overall. And then also looking at a parking garage in the north area of the district to serve that part of the district. There, there will be some parking need eventually, and especially with City Hall, whether somewhere in that area of Montezuma and Willis, we're seeing as a higher capacity parking need.
So we're going to ask you for your feedback on what we've thrown out because some of it's a little different than you're probably used to seeing. But we just wanted to let you know where we are in the process. We're right now, based on the comments we get today and tonight from the community, we're going to the planning commission on Thursday. We'll be further refining the plan and some of the designs we put out, some of our circulation recommendations, and then developing a draft plan and bringing that back to, I think in a work session format, I think is how we scoped it. And then bringing forward the final draft, hopefully by the end of the year. So that's our time schedule. We're, we're beginning to move towards the end of this project. And so what we were just hoping is to get some comments from you on some of the concepts we threw out today.
Well, very good. Well, thank you for that presentation. A lot of great ideas, a lot of work that you guys have put into this. I appreciate that. Questions, comments from the council? I know we had a few members, Councilmember Rusin, you've been working on this. Who else is on that group? Blair? And Alexa, are you on there?
Yeah, I went to a couple of them.
Mr. Lamar?
I just wanted to say something that kind of transcends this, but it talks a little bit about, so you know, we've heard a lot of community consternation recently about multifamily and where the appropriateness of putting multifamily is. And as you look at this corridor, in my mind, this is an ideal location for multifamily redevelopment in an urban core. And I honestly believe it would be politically, along with practically, a lot more palatable than a lot of locations we've talked about. Just my two cents on it.
Yeah, it makes a lot of sense to try to get as many people and as much foot traffic as you can in these areas to enjoy the corridor as well as those businesses along the corridor. One of the things I was thinking about kind of in the weeds with this a little bit, are you familiar with the APS transmission line along the west side of Granite Street? It always goes away, but there is a high volume APS transmission line that runs, am I correct, Tyler? Along the west side of Granite Creek? So the reason I bring that up is it can be an impediment to businesses wanting to develop along there. And there was a development planned on that west side of Granite Creek that a gentleman was trying to get done. And there was an issue with that power line and the fire department being able to get certain apparatus in there. Michael remembers what I'm talking about. So any of those kinds of existing infrastructure issues that we have like that, that can be mitigated ahead of time, whether by policy or by actually moving, you know, those, those, those pieces of infrastructure I think would be helpful. Because that's a practical thing that got in the way of what, what I thought was a really good multifamily development right on Granite Creek.
You know, the other thing is, when you look at something like this, there's going to be elements you're like, oh, that doesn't look like Prescott. Oh, that sort of looks like, don't get wrapped up in that. This is like global concepts and you're going to pick and choose things that make sense here and ignore things that don't. Leslie's nodding her head. It's not like this is a zero sum game or an all or nothing proposition. It's just to spur conversation about an underutilized asset.
Yeah. I also like the fact that you're using the Whiskey Row Alley, trying to kind of accentuate that, bring more attention, make it more usable, more, more brought to the forefront. Because I think it's a great asset. We just haven't really been able to fully leverage it just yet. Councilman Tenney?
Yeah, just really quickly, you've been very thorough and I don't want to belabor the discussion, but at one point you brought up the, the fact that we're in the floodplain, redevelopment of these things is potentially costly for folks, given that, you know, you need to bring things up to code, et cetera. If you, you don't need to spend time necessarily responding to me directly, but if, if you'll have the opportunity, maybe put in writing for us later or get with our staff and whatnot and talk about creative solutions that other entities, municipalities have, have come up with in those terms. I had a colleague, similar kind of thing to Greg, was looking at one of the buildings that's fairly close to Granite Creek as ideal for what he wanted to do, looking at purchasing it, remodeling it, et cetera. But, but found because it was in the floodplain, it was prohibitively expensive. He'd have to do everything essentially from scratch, bring everything up to feet, et cetera, et cetera. It's actually quite far back from, from the creek in this case. But what, what are some things that we can do to blend the safety concerns there with, with the realities of the cost of redeveloping? And so ideas that you'd have on that would, in some format, would be useful to us.
And Councilman Tenney, I just, I do want to just quickly touch on that because it's a underlying issue throughout the corridor. And we are looking at things, we've actually tried to figure out what we can do to, one, get rid of the floodplain. And that's not going to happen. We know that the city is working on reducing it. But even reducing the width of that floodplain isn't going to really significantly impact the district. So that's why you saw us recommending no residential uses on the ground floor and really looking to uses that could, I don't want to use the word, when you're dealing like literally in a wash, they say sacrificial. I don't want to use that word for above. We don't want to sacrifice anything. But uses that could easily recover or more quickly recover and more inexpensively recover from a flooding event. So some of those might be certain types of retail or just part of the ideas of the east-west alleyways. Again, was to provide more permeable surface instead of a paved surface and more drainage opportunities as well. Again, none of that, according to our engineer, would significantly reduce the floodplain to an extent that it could disappear. But one of the things our design guidelines do stress is we don't want to see someone build a garage or a blank wall. Because that would be not helpful to the kind of downtown we're trying to promote.
Great. Yeah, in that vein, this person was looking at retail, but he was told that you're going to have to redo this entire building. If you want to remodel anything, you've got to remodel the entire thing. And he was, okay, I'm out. So I don't know if that was a thing or not. If he misinterpreted what he was told, I don't believe that's the case. It's pretty sharp. But we, we might look at, in, in the, in the light of what you're suggesting, what kinds of compromises with current code could be achieved.
Councilman Tenney, can I suggest if the individual you reference is willing to talk to Tyler? Maybe we can incorporate or at least acknowledge some of our shortcomings from a regulatory perspective to see if in this process, there's workarounds? Is it, if that'd be okay with you, I think that'd be good.
No doubt he'd be happy to talk about that.
Councilman Sishka?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your presentation. I love the concept of downtown living. However, with downtown living comes cars that are parked somewhere. And, you know, cars that spend the night, maybe leaving during the day for work, come back, expect parking. I have a concern about where that parking is going to be. A parking garage is great, but if you're off of Aubrey and you park in the parking garage down by New City Hall, that's a little bit of a hike. So, you know, my concern is, is where do you park these people?
Kurt, do you want to take that? I'm looking to the sky. Kurt?
Yeah, hi. Well, I'll speak to the site studies that we're currently looking at. So we had the, the one project in the work precinct that's live work. And we're proposing for that, that there would be a driveway to access what we call under parking for the, for the occupants of those units. So that'd be similar to the parking that you'd see with a townhome. So that, that, the occupants, then we would propose they'd be parked on-site. And that'd be the similar for a town, any kind of townhome or live work product. Presumably that'd be the type of parking provided. For the live precinct where you saw that, that mixed use product, what we would propose there, and we'll show it in, in a more complete set of drawings, we would propose what's called a podium parking. So the retail and residential would, would wrap the parking, which would basically be a structure interior to the building. And that, and that would solve some of the floodplain issues. So much of the ground floor would be parking, except along Montezuma. And again, that's a similar kind of parking solution you'd see with many multi or mixed use type products. So again, I think much of that parking for those type of uses can be provided on-site, much or all. The third site study we were showing where we had just retail and restaurant, we were, that particular site, we weren't looking at providing parking on-site because that, where that particular site study is located directly across the street from the parking structure. So in that case, we made the assumption that patrons and occupants of that retail restaurant use would be able to park within the parking structure.
Thank you. One other question. What, what do you see as the timeline for a project like this to come to fruition?
It's, I'm going to answer that. This is not something that changes overnight. And frankly, I don't know that this community is all about change overnight anyway, based on my experience here. It's an evolution. It's, you know, I, I think an anchor tenant right now towards this concept is Hilton Garden Inn. And they're the redevelopment. You're going to see a lot of one-off, especially these are public-private partnerships where we work with somebody who has a vision, we look at their vision, it's acceptable to us. So I, I mean, you're talking decades, but it's this whole next generation concept, that's what this planning is for. It's for the future of this community for the next 50 years.
Okay. Thanks, Mike.
Did, am I okay with that?
Well, that's great. Actually, I always respond to that question with the example of downtown Chandler. And they call it the longest overnight success story in the history of the United States. But they've been working on that for over 30 years. But I do think, you know, to what Mr. Lamar said, is that you reach a point where you reach critical mass and things start happening more quickly. But until you get there, it's one-off and one-off. And I do think from our community meetings and our conversations with property owners, there's certainly the interest there. It's, I think it was Councilman Tenney said, there's just challenges. And, or it was the mayor, actually, I think, there are just challenges. And it's a question of beginning to take down those challenges one by one. I don't know that you'll be able to deal with them all at once. And, and there's going to have to be a lot of unique solutions. But I think the first step, you know, I'm a planner, so I have to say this is really a vision. And so that's what we're hoping to work with you to, to come upon.
Councilman Rusin?
Thank you. I really think this is an exciting project and I think it will be a great investment in our community. And, but we need to remember that we need, we will need to update our codes and zoning in the downtown business area in order to enhance the area. So we will have to work with you and consider your recommendations in that department.
Councilman Blair?
Well, I think there's a lot of opportunities there, you know, knowing the area like I do and the city property that we're looking at selling. You know, we keep talking about parking, parking, parking and public-private opportunities. But before anybody wants to get invested, and then like Clark here, I have some very good friends that are interested in some properties along there, even the old Prescott Unified School District. But the problem becomes whether somebody's honest with you and tells you what you can do by federal government standards when it comes to floodplain, things that you can do. The Haley's have that piece of property on McCormick and right there across from the founding fathers. It's been sitting there empty fallow for years. And the reason why is because of the regulations that are tied to it. So I think one thing that we have to do as a community is understand what those, you know, regulations are and how we can change our downtown codes to help benefit those structures and those private partnerships to put something in there meaningful. All along that backside of McCormick Street, from Gurley all the way up to the corner is prime for redevelopment. As long as you can get past the rules and regulations that are constantly changing about floodways. And as somebody that's lived here all my life, I've never seen water out of that creek once. And so we keep wanting to put all these high expensive regulations on people that want to change that quarter. But until they're written down and until we have a viable way to make people understand what we can do as a city and partnerships, we're not going to go anywhere with it because people won't, they just run away from it. They don't want to touch it. So I think we need to make sure that people understand clearly what federal law is and what city code is. And that cannot keep changing. It's got to be a firm thing. So people totally understand, if I buy one of those pieces of property, what's it going to cost me? And not have it changed in the middle of the project. And a lot of times that happens in this community.
Other comments from the council? Public comment? Well, thank you guys so much for the presentation.
You're not done with me yet. I've got one more quick one to go. So we just wanted to bring you up to speed with some of the research we've done for North Prescott or Prescott North. Many of you know, we started this planning process at the same time we started Granite Creek. But we've heard a lot from the community. There's been a lot of discussion on it. And so we, back in, I think it was probably May or April, more or less put it on hold. And, but we'd done some research. And so we just wanted to share with you the research we've done. At this point, I think we anticipate restarting the process in January. And we will have gotten, I think, a, a better feel for where people stand and where the city stands in terms of moving forward. So again, the North Prescott, Prescott North area is also got a citizen steering committee to help provide oversight and input. And here's the names on that steering committee. You'll see many of them are landowners, regional agencies, folks that are very active. We've got the airport advisory committee on there as well. And we've never said no to anyone interested in participating in this committee, so the list just continually expands. In terms of where we are in the process, we're really at about three. We've looked at various airports for best practices. I think we have a working vision. We've done our economic studies and infrastructure assessments. And similar to Granite Creek, we had a site walk where we drove around the site. There were probably 25 people with us. We looked at the site. We had landowners speaking with us, business owners speaking with us, and we learned a lot. As we move forward, we'll be developing and looking at land use options and refining them and coming up with a draft plan. Project has a webpage. We've got two community meetings planned. We had the first one. And for this project, we're also having what I call online coffee shop meetings. Once we start the project up, I'm just going to basically turn on Zoom once a month and answer questions. Just so folks can stay abreast of what's happening. And then we also plan on bringing back our ideas to you through some council and commission presentations. Right now, we're just doing the working vision best practices presentation today. Right now, we're just doing the working vision best practices presentation today and you'll see that on the list. So we've done some area assessments and economics, transportation and land use for this area. And you can see the study area outlined on this map. What this map also shows you, and we'll talk a little bit more about it, are the entitled areas in, in the Prescott North area. And those areas are mostly parts of the airport, but Deepwell Ranch and AED. Okay, here's our economic analysis.
We just wanted to set the stage for where Prescott stands in the Yavapai County economy and how perhaps that the airport area or the North Prescott area will factor into that. So we took a look at population forecasts and this is from the CYMPO forecast that we think are probably the most legitimate forecasts that are out there. The state has forecasts that we think are pretty flawed, but you can see that the Prescott Valley is going to really overtake Prescott in terms of population growth in the future. But you'll keep growing as well over the next 30 years or so. And so it's a pretty good growth perspective that you're, you're looking at. In terms of employment, once again, this is from the, the MPO and Prescott is expected to grow rather slowly in terms of overemployment. Prescott Valley a little bit quicker. But what we really see is the airport being the asset for high-quality, high-paying jobs. And that's where we really think that Prescott can really shine. Prescott Valley, we kind of look more retail services, service jobs, things of that nature that aren't going to be quite as high wages as what you'll find in Prescott. We compared the percentages of, of the county population for Prescott and Prescott Valley. You can see that Prescott has about 18% of the county population, but you have 40% of all the county employment. So that's a really good factor to keep in mind. You're the economic center of Yavapai County. We looked at jobs to population ratio, Prescott 0.6 jobs for every person in the county. If you look at Maricopa County, it's about 0.5 jobs for every person. So you're even above what is found in Maricopa County in terms of your, your jobs to population ratio. This is where you really start to shine is per capita retail and restaurant sales. You're way above anybody else in the valley. You're, you're way above Yavapai County averages. So you're really a dominating economic force here. You have 52% of all the retail sales in the county come into Prescott. 25% of all the restaurant sales. So you are, once again, the economic center of Yavapai County. And the idea is that can the Prescott North area keep you in that, in that same category and keep you moving forward? We looked at just real quickly unemployment rates. You can see what happened in 2020. You bounced up pretty high. But over time, this is on a monthly basis, starting in January 2020 through January 21. And you went up and you came back down and you're doing fairly well right now. And Arizona has recaptured virtually all the jobs that were lost during the pandemic. Location quotient, this may be a little bit hard for you to see, but the location quotient's a very simple thing. It takes the percentage of, of jobs in each category and compares it to the state of Arizona. So if you have a location quotient of one, that means that the percentage of jobs in that category are the same as, as in the state of Arizona. So if you get above that, you start to see what your, your strengths are in the economy. And you can see consumer goods manufacturing, you're way up there. I think that's almost three, so three times more jobs in consumer manufacturing than the state of Arizona. That's driven by Sturm Ruger, basically. Then you can see healthcare. You have a lot of healthcare services here. You can keep going down the list. Government, education, you've got great educational facilities here. So those are the things that really make you stand out in your economy. Largest employers, you're probably familiar with this, the hospital, the Sturm Ruger, Embry-Riddle, things of that nature. Prescott Valley has quite a bit different type of makeup in terms of its, of the employers. And the percentage of, Prescott's percentage of county employee employment by cluster, once again. High-tech manufacturing, you have 43% of all the high-tech manufacturing in the county. Now, it's not a big number, but what you do have in the county, you have 40, 43% of that. Once again, consumer goods, manufacturing, Sturm Ruger, telecommunications, transportation, distribution, healthcare, things of that nature. This shows the, the flow of people in and out of Prescott and Prescott Valley in a typical day. So you can see for Prescott, 17,000 people commute into the city on a typical day to work. 8,800 or so leave and 6,800 both live and work in Prescott. And it's the opposite, obviously, in Prescott Valley where almost 14,000 people leave each day to work out of Prescott Valley, 7,000 come into Prescott Valley. So once again, just showing, these are just the numbers that go with that, that once again, a lot of commuting into Prescott Valley for, for work. But once again, just to summarize, the, the idea is setting the foundation and trying to show, okay, how does the Prescott North area really benefit? How can it continue to benefit the community? Particularly with the airport, which is one of the, probably the major asset of the community today. Who's this?
Just talk a little bit about current and planned land uses. This is your general plan land use. And that blue line is sort of the flight area from the airport. And then the black line is sort of the crash zone area where you try not to have any residential development. And you'll see that on all the maps. In your general plan, which is starting to get updated this year, you'll see areas that were identified for commercial. Those are the striped areas and residential development. And then there's no, the area to the northwest is identified as non-residential agricultural types or ranch types of development. Again, this is areas that are currently entitled. So you'll see AED and Deepwell Ranch entitlements there around the airport and, and within the planning area. And then we just wanted to point out state land ownership. The state's an important land owner in this area. One of the concerns the state has is a lot of the land parcels they have are impacted by easements. And so the state is beginning to look at opportunities to move some of that land into private ownership.
So for transportation in the area, all of this is based off the CIMPO planning, which is all based off of approved general plans in, in the, the area. And, you know, it's no surprise that the bypass and, and 89 are the major transportation corridors, carry large volumes and are projected to carry larger volumes. So to address that, there we go. CIMPO's plan, oh gosh. It's, it's getting fancy on me. Has high priority areas, you know, in the southern part where the, the existing population is higher. And then the median priorities are the blue. And then the tertiary are really, I'll just click through that quickly, are in the brown, but those are the future. That's where the general plans show growth. And so this parallel bypass road, which is labeled as Q and R on here. There's only so much capacity that can happen on 89. So there'll need to be another roadway, major roadway going north and then west to serve areas to the north and west. And capacities will just increase on the existing corridors. And then these bypasses and major arterials and highways will, will serve to distribute. One of the things I do want to point out is it was also in the airport plan, the need for a loop road around the airport to serve really the industrial and office, those businesses on both sides of the airport and also provide some of the relief around the airport to get people east and west.
I don't know if this didn't happen. This is sort of new info to us. Couple of the other things we did to just learn about the area and learn what was important to people was we did hold focus groups. And we held them in April on several days. They included landowners and developers. We talked to the airport, the Federal Aviation Commission, businesses, adjacent jurisdictions and regional planning entities. And just as a reminder, they're non-attributed, so we don't share who's in them and what, you know, who said what, but we do share what people said. These are summaries of basically what we've heard. And the businesses both basically said protecting the airport is critical to them and really important for their long-term health and the airport's long-term health. ERAU is very dependent on the airport and it's, it's, it's an important consideration as we move forward is, is protecting ERAU. Rick mentioned what a large employer they are. They're also important to the economy of the city. ERAU is also looking at growing gangbusters and the airport's key to its future. Supply chain, right now they think is generally adequate, but there is an interest in growing the airport area to improve that supply chain. Things like FedEx, we know that Amazon opened in Prescott Valley, but other types of entities like that. So folks can get goods that they need quickly. And they also want commerce services. A lot of the businesses said to us, they don't like using three quarters of their day to drive somewhere for lunch to meet a business associate. So there's a real interest in business and seeing this area begin to develop with more support for them and more businesses, which lends the existing businesses support. The landowners and developers felt that there should be better updated roadway standards, that Deepwell Ranch is zoned and there should be no changes to it, that the land north of Deepwell will always be ranchland and the current land use plans adequately protect the airport. And then for planning in adjacent jurisdictions, again, an emphasis on the airport and how important that airport is. The opportunities to look at some of the roadway alignments and maybe reexamine them as land use plans change and update. There's real interest in multifamily housing and workforce housing. As you know, Prescott's housing values are high, but if we need people to work in Prescott's businesses as traffic increases, they're going to want to live closer into where they work. Open space and trail connections are very important to this area and retail development is also important. And this is an opportunity for the city to continue to capture sales tax. We did meet in particular with the FAA and the airport, and they are very concerned about land use around the airport and protecting the airport. So these are some of the things that they mentioned. One of the things I thought was interesting is that there are a lot of roadway issues to and in the airport. And a couple of the businesses even told us they weren't able to get equipment in. They literally had to have the truck park and drive another vehicle to tow the equipment into their business. Because the roadways don't support the size of the trucks they need. We did a survey of this area as well, a citizen survey. It lasted about two weeks. We got about 784 responses. You can see most of them were over one weekend. There was someone that sent out a mailer and said, hey, this survey is out. And it was an interest group. So it sort of just went off the charts. Here's where folks live that responded to the survey. So that just gives you a feel for where they lived. And that's their IP address. So sometimes we had folks coming in from Brazil, but that gives you a pretty good location. Here were some of the topics that they identified as important. So folks are really interested in open space up there. But once you begin to kind of take away that, the next most important concern was traffic and then affordable housing in the airport. So people understand that there needs to be opportunities and new housing in this area. The airport's important, but they're also very connected to the environment. And you'll see that split go through the survey. We asked how important it was to protect the operations of the airport. Everyone rated that the most important of five. The average was 4.1. So people are very interested in protecting the airport. At the same time, they don't want to see development around the airport. So we just thought this survey was interesting because it, it really shows how people are conflicted over this area and the challenge that we face in moving forward. I might say that what's also interesting is the next most important thing that they said is they see it as a high-tech employment center. So again, it's, it's, you know, the same people are, are saying almost two different things. And, and they really love that area, but they also recognize the airport's important. They know it's important for high-tech employment. They envision aerospace-related jobs being in this airport area. And at the same time, they more largely don't want to see development. And you can see where these answers come from. When we look at things that were important planning topics, again, you can combine open space. Those are the three top things, what it looks like in open space. And then it's all about protecting the airport, walkable and bikeable communities. So again, I think people are very, the only word I can use is conflicted. They love what they have, I think, but they recognize that this is an important opportunity and it needs to be done right. And so that going forward is what we've been keeping in mind. We looked at some comparable airports. I just wanted to list them for you. And what we learned is that there's all kinds of development that can occur around airports. You can either change the development or you can change the operations of the airport. And that really seems to be how it, it tends to work depending on the community. And that's where we are on our existing conditions. We're happy to respond to any questions.
Yeah, thank you, Leslie. Any questions, comments from the council on the North plan? Thanks for the, oh yeah, go ahead.
One of the things I've been concerned about is, is having people stay in the area in which they live. And, you know, you mentioned multifamily, there's housing going in and out there. Did you, did you talk at all about any kind of, the need for any kind of commercial or was that something that was even in your purview?
Do you mean retail commercial?
Retail commercial.
We did. In fact, we hear a lot about that, especially from the planners. People in the survey didn't really say retail was important to them, so to speak. But that's because not a whole lot of people live out there right now. Most people live outside the area. But when we did speak to people, they didn't, they wanted people to be able to access services, excuse me, within the area. And the other discussion we had is where the next big retail development will locate? Is it going to be in Prescott or is it going to be across the border in Prescott Valley? And there was a lot of interest in putting in place opportunities for that development to locate in Prescott.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Rusin.
Thank you. Do you have any knowledge of any cases where airports in other communities weren't protected? And what the consequences were?
I think, I can't remember the name of the one in California where people fly straight in the air, that's San Diego. John Wayne. John Wayne Airport's a good example. The John Wayne, and I'm going to preface this by saying, it depends what you want your airport for. John Wayne in San Diego is a good example of where an airport had to change its operations. And if you've ever flown in and out, there are flight restrictions on the times that those planes can fly and how they come up and down out of the airport. That's also going to impact the size of the aircraft that can occur. We know that your airport wants to extend a runway. If you look at an airport as an economic development generator, and we think this airport is an important one. It's, it's, it's sort of the big boy in the region. Then you need to make sure that it remains accessible for the businesses around it. So with regards to that, we had discussions with the businesses. And they really want to be able to protect those operations so they can get the goods and services they need in and out. You can look at the Mesa Gateway Airport. That airport has protected its airspace and now they have the Sky, I think it's called Skybridge, where there's a place where you fly in goods from Mexico and there's no customs. And that shortens the turnaround time of bringing those goods either back to Mexico or back, you know, from the US to process in Mexico and back to the US substantially. It's a huge economic development boon. So how you protect your airport really directly impacts the role it can play in your community.
So you're talking mainly about preventing residential encroachment on, on the airport?
Uh, we are.
Yes. And that's what, is that what happened with? Yes. And that's what, is that what happened with the John Wayne Airport? It was mostly residential encroachment?
You know, the thing to understand is John Wayne was the residential was there for a very long time before the airport grew. And that's one of the things we learned about too, is that in most cases, the airport grew, but the residential was there already. So they had to change their operations to grow. You have a unique opportunity, like Mesa did with Williams, to say, our airport is here without the residential. Can we put in place protections for it now so the airport can be as flexible as possible? And its operations can continue to diversify in the future in ways that we might not imagine even today.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Councilman Good?
Yeah, I think at least on the north, Prescott concerns that the public expressed wanting to protect the airport's development, but at the same time being particularly concerned about development around there. I think it really needs to be clarified of what kind of development are they concerned about? So I think there's a generally agreement that being able to develop restaurants and retail and, and commercial developments that provide the goods and services that the people who are residing their need is the kind of development they would like to see. But without the, and protecting the buffer around the airport so that job opportunities, high-income opportunities are, are expected and supported. And then also you're looking at Simpo's concerns about traffic are, and most of their plans are five-year plans. And as we consider, we watch the rapid development of residential around the airport. We're not really coming up with solutions on how to deal with the growing congestion that we're seeing already. So just recognizing that yes, this is a problem. Okay, that's the start. But what are the solutions to that problem? How do we move vehicles in a safe but efficient manner? And we need to deal with that pretty quickly rather than wait for Simpo's five-year plans to be funded somehow. By the time that happens, we're overly congested and we don't really have the ability to move vehicles. As you saw, when you see all the people that are commuting into Prescott, there's a substantial number and we want to make sure that we can have that vehicle traffic planned and deal with it much more quickly than at least we've seen up on the screens.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from the council? All right. Are you done now?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members of the council.
All right. Thank you, Leslie. Appreciate it. All right, let's move on to item B, please.
Approval of city contract number 2022-078 with Frontburner Media LLC for marketing and public relations services.
Good afternoon, mayor councilmembers. Anne Stewart, Tourism and Economic Development. And today we're seeking approval for a contract with Frontburner Media Services. As you know, Frontburner Media has worked with the tourism office for many years. Heather Herman, principal of Frontburner Media is here today, as well as John Heine, if there are questions. Frontburner has helped the tourism office for many years with marketing, public relations services, social media planning, as well as the coordination and management of the AOT Royal Co-op. And that includes its strategy, its placement as deliverables. Heather's relationship with us over the last year and a half has been incredible and invaluable. And we really couldn't have gotten the last year and a half without her. So we continue to seek her expertise, her relationships amongst the state. And, you know, as we, the industry for tourism is changing, as you know, the markets are changing constantly day to day. So we look to her for her advice. So we're seeking approval today for this contract. It is annual 37,800. And funds come from the bed tax. This is a budgeted expense. And again, I like to remind everybody that bed tax refers to a fee collected by a visitor pays it by when they say to rent a hotel, motel, or temporary lodging facility.
Thank you, Annie. Any questions, comments from the council? Councilman Good?
Thank you, Mayor. How do you go about determining how effective their marketing is? What standards do you have? How can we rest assured that the investment we're making is producing the results we expect?
Absolutely. I'm going to answer some of them and then I bet if they want to come up more. Depending on the type of media, whether it's print, whether it's social media, digital placement right now, there are metrics that we can track. And so we use those metrics to track where we're placing our advertising, what's coming in from that market. And then, of course, our biggest measurement would be from our bed tax collections and the Smith Travel Research Report, which is the report that basis, that we get back for occupancy, ABR, average daily rate, and the forecasting out. And so that's how we look at those measurements. Also, the AOT Royal Co-op, which allows destinations like Prescott to be able to market on a level with, you know, the rest of the larger destinations. We base a lot of the metrics off of that as well. And Heather's been very familiar with, with our markets, where we've been shifting and has relationships in those markets with a lot of those advertisers and vendors that are able to give her results back.
Well, I think we've seen a pretty substantial response to the Hilton Garden Inn and the amount of occupancy that they have there. And I think in the past, we've had kind of a competitive environment with certain hotels. Have you made any projections on, based upon the performance of attracting visitors? How much additional hotel rooms we should expect to be able to support?
Yeah, that's a really good question, Councilwoman Good. So want to give a little bit of history on that. Right before we went into the pandemic, we were going to be up in inventory in rooms for the first time in about 10 years with the addition of the Hilton Garden Inn. Well, once the pandemic happened, we had several hotel rooms come offline to remodel. One of them went to a rental, a monthly rental program instead. So it flattened our inventory during the pandemic. And because all rural destinations actually fared well during the pandemic and drove up most of the average daily rates, that's, you know, that's why a lot of our rates were high. Now, with some of our properties taking off their monthly rental programming and going back to visitors staying overnight in their hotel format, our inventory is being driven back up again. So we're going to be plus about 45, 50 rooms again. We know that our neighboring community right now has some investors who are looking back into building those properties again. But if I had, you know, it's hard to say the forecasting right now because we are watching those trends and we are watching the insights and what they're saying. And until we really know within the next two years with the return of the rest of the domestic market and the rest of the international market, they're saying international travel right now is not coming back till 23, 24. We can't really give a prediction on the number of rooms. I think that we're going to still do well with some of those rooms coming back online. And as people start to go back into the cities for travel.
Yeah, I think we're still in such a situation that it's hard to be able to project what the future is going to be like based upon these variables and constantly changing either domestic or international rules for travel.
Correct. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Public comment?
No, Mayor.
Entertained a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve city contract number 2022-01, or 078.
Second.
Have a motion and second, please vote.
Pass the seven zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Anne. Let's move on to item C.
Approval of payment to municipal firefighters' cancer reimbursement fund per ARS Title 23, Chapter 11.
Thank you, Sarah. Mayor and council Mark Woodfill, Finance Director. We've been dealing, of course, with a different, different worker comps issue and firemen and the presumed cancer assumption that workers' comp has done. During the legislative processes last year, the legislature came up with a way to fund it. And that was to assess all the municipalities, $15 million a year, spread out based on our population. So this money is put to the IAC, the Industrial Commission of Arizona, to hold in trust to reimburse us our, our insurance pool and that for those costs as they happen. The amount of our contribution is 114,737, which is, which through the budget process, this, this fee, this, this pool was basically replaced our contribution to Department of Revenue that we've had to make every year. They got rid of us paying for the operations of a state fund to put in money into a trust that would actually benefit our employees, our firefighters. So the differential between this new fee compared to our old fee is about $670 this year. So it's real comparable to that fee. Again, that goes into trust and then will reimburse our insurance agency and us for a variety of costs. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions, comments from the council? Public comment?
No, Mayor.
Entertained a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve payment of $114,737 to MFCR for fiscal year 22.
Second. Motion and second, please vote.
Pass the seven zero.
Item D, please.
Approval of city contract number 2022-065 to Pavco Inc. for the fiscal year 22 pavement reconstruction project phase one.
Good afternoon, mayor council. Tim Sherwood with Public Works. Item I have for you this afternoon is our FY22 pavement reconstruction project phase one. This will include Flora Street, Black Drive, Campbell Avenue, and Prescott Heights Drive over in the Prescott Heights subdivision. The pavement in that neighborhood exhibits distressed cracking, transverse cracking in areas of failed subgrade. The existing pavement is in very poor condition, has little, little to no remaining service life left. And a lot of these roads were mill paved and then they've just been chip sealed over the years. So they've just older rural-type residential roads. The method we're going to use for this project is a mill-in-place and place an asphalt course on top. We've had really good success with this over the last couple of years. Pulverize the existing road structure and base structure together to make a new base section and then we pave on top of it. We're not hauling off millings when we're doing this process. We're not hauling back in ABC to rebuild the pavement structure. In addition, we have some areas of poor drainage problems. The city has done several of the areas themselves, but it's kind of gone beyond the scope of what they can do. So we're going to clean, redefine a lot of the ditches and reinforce a lot of the ditches out there with riprap. Project was advertised the last couple of weekends of August. We received three bids on September 9th. Public Works is recommending that we award the low bid to Pavco out of Phoenix for $753,839.80. The engineer's estimate for the project was $826,157.50. Staff has received written confirmation of the bid from Pavco. Verification of their license, bonding references, and past performance of previous municipal projects has been completed and deemed satisfactory. We will use our standard construction contract for this project. And funding for this project is budgeted in FY22 from the Streets Fund. And with that, I will take any questions.
Thank you, Tim. Good to see you. Good job on the presentation.
Thank you.
It's Craig Hunting. What's he doing?
He's in Wisconsin for a couple of weeks.
Good for him. Good for him.
I have one question, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Tim, when it, when will this phase one begin?
Uh, we're shooting for right around the first of October.
Hopefully they get done before cold weather?
Yeah, I mean, we have a tendency to really have a good paving opportunity through even mid to late November. This is anticipated to be wrapped up by the first part of December, so we should be in good shape.
Very good. Thank you.
Councilman Good?
Thank you, Tim. I'm pleased to see that some of our older community and neighborhood areas are finally getting some attention. I know we, most of our pavement rehab programs are much higher volume, higher traffic areas. And I think it's important that we set aside a certain percentage every year to deal with some of these older, smaller neighborhoods that have just as much right to safe travel on their streets, but sometimes don't get much attention. So I'm pleased to see this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments? Public comment?
No, Mayor.
Entertained a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve city contract number 2022-065.
Second. Have a motion and second, please vote.
Pass the seven zero.
Thank you, Tim. We'll move to item E, please.
Approval of city contract number 2022-064 to Asphalt Paving and Supply, Inc. For the fiscal year 22 pavement rehabilitation project phase one.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Eric Stewart, Public Works. This pavement rehab project on Wilkinson Drive begins on the north of the the new Corsair Roundabout there on the south end there and heads north all the way to the airport gate. This stretch of road has an average JD traffic count about 3,500. And it's about 26-plus years old. It has no remaining service life. It's fully alligator and has lots of rutting throughout it. The pavement condition in this section is on average 28, and that's something that you don't deal with. You just remove it, move on. We actually did a geotech investigation in this area and found that most of this road when it was constructed 26 years ago has four inches of asphalt on top of 12 inches of compacted ABC. That's the good news. In some areas, we did find however, that there's some where we have terrible rutting in the pavement that there's high PI soil, high plastic, plasticity index soil that we're planning on mitigating. The plan of attack is to remove the existing pavement section via milling, go in and reconstruct the areas that have in suitable subgrades and then pave back five inches of asphalt concrete. We're coming back with a little thicker section just to accommodate future traffic out in the northern region of the airport. In conjunction with this pavement rehab, we will be updating ADA ramps and things like that, which is a Department of Justice requirement on projects like this. And we'll also be stalling new curb and gutter in places where we're trying to correct surface drainage in the streets and get it off into drainage esmitts, et cetera. I'd also like to point out, we're recycling 100% of this material, the asphalt coming off this project. It's actually being shipped out to the water reclamation facility and staff will be using it out there to pave roads and operation sites out there onsite at the treatment plant. Our apparent low bidder on this project, responsive low bidder, is Asphalt Paving Supply for $1,152,525.25. And we have confirmed that the, we have very good history on the previous project. In fact, in the spring, they had a rehab project in Smocktree. They were quite successful. And we are recommending a word to our responsive low bidder at this time. I can entertain any questions?
Thank you, Eric. Questions, comments from the council? Councilmember Rusin?
Thank you. Eric, I see that it's phase one. Could you enlighten us about phase two?
Sure. So what we did with our pavement management program is we, we broke up, what we're trying to do is impact about eight and a half million dollars worth of improvements throughout the city. What we did is we broke things up based on proximity, type of projects, things like that. And then call them phase one and two so that we could like put something on the street, be able to build it with available contract services as well as in-house staff to handle these. Sometimes we come in with a, a big $4 million project. It's hard to handle it internally and externally with our contract community. So that's, so the next phase isn't here specifically, but we'll be working on things out at the ranch because that's a proximity and then so forth throughout the spring.
So it's a citywide phase?
Correct, yes.
Thanks.
Other comments from the council? Public comment?
No, Mayor.
Entertained a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve city contact number 2022-064.
Second.
Have a motion and second, please vote.
Pass the seven zero.
Thank you. Thank you. And the all elusive, item 10F, please.
Approval of city contract number 2022-044 with Cactus Asphalt for pavement improvements at Prescott Regional Airport.
Good afternoon. I'm Robin Sabata, Airport Director. And this item is to approve a city contract with Cactus Asphalt, not to exceed $370,475.67. Basically, there's two phases to this project, or not two phases, but two elements of this project. One is that we're going to be doing a seal coat, crack seal and striping on one half of our Crosswind runway. We just finished doing a one-inch milling overlay on the other half, and they didn't weather equally. So one needed a lot more maintenance than the other did, and the other was covered under a 90-10 grant. This one will be out of the airport fund. The second portion of the project is on the parallel taxiway right next to the Crosswind runway. This is referred to as Taxiway Echo. And there are some areas that did not, again, weather in the same manner. So some are in worse shapes than others. So we got several sections between Echo 1 and Echo 3 that are going to be accomplished. As the table on the page two shows, we're going to be spending $166,556 for the crack seal and seal coat on the runway, and $178,918 for the milling overlay. There is an error in the agenda memo. It does say, it does reference a $45,000 contingency, and it's actually a $25,000 contingency. And that is reflected in the table, and that's accurate. We have a contingency in there because we ran into a problem when we were doing the milling overlay on the runway. And when we actually milled it, we got down to dirt and didn't expect to. So we have enough in there to be able to accomplish that because we are looking at three-inch depth of a milling overlay on the taxiway. And with that, that's it.
Thank you, Robin. Questions, comments from the council? Councilmember Roussing?
Thank you. And I assume Cactus has a proven record with us working on our runways?
Well, we've actually, Cactus is used throughout the state. They're doing all of the pavement maintenance program through the state. And they just finished doing the one-inch milling overlay on one half of the Crosswind runway, and they did a good job. This falls under a JOC that they already have. And that actually has a deadline date. It's Pennell County is using that. And they have a deadline date of, their contract extends through June 30th, 2022. So we are using that contract. So we've, we've found their work to be acceptable.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments? Public comment?
No, Mayor.
Entertain a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve city contract number 2022-044.
Second. We have a motion and second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Thank you, Robin.
Thank you.
Our quote comes to us from Ronald Reagan. Always says it really well, one of my favorite presidents. Surround yourself with the best people you can find, delegate authority, and don't interfere as long as the policy you've decided upon is being carried out. This meeting is adjourned.